8:32. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is Independent School District 832. This is a regular school board meeting. The Mod Amedai District Education Community and District. And it is Thursday, May 23rd, 2024, 7 o'clock PM. Call a pledge of allegiance. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of attendance, please. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'm moved.
By Director Domann. Second by Director Regan. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'm moved.
By Director Peterson.
Second.
By Director Domann. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, presentations and recognition. We will start with, oh, recognition and discussion of the Zephyr Showcase.
Right, so after a Zephyr Learning Showcase, we all have an opportunity. So a Zephyr Learning Showcase happens before the board meeting, and it's for our students to come and share with us some of the things they are working on and just have discussion. And so it's a little more informal, and we have a, we had a great turnout tonight. And then this is our opportunity as a school board to comment on what you heard, saw, who you talked to, just general impressions.
Director Peterson.
Okay. Well, I went to listen to two of the TED Talks. I helped do it live. I think some of you did too. So I went to, and one of the girls I listened to was here today, and I wasn't surprised because her TED Talk was amazing when I heard it live. And she was chosen to present tonight. And then I listened to two others, and just the way they can get that information in the three minutes is really impressive. They were really prepared. I love the book clubs at OH. I just finished mine yesterday with a fourth grade class. And so there were some third and fourth graders here tonight. And the books they choose, I, I love every year. And then I just was really interested in math. I'm terrible at math, and those kids just blew me away with their facts like that.
Manal. Director Regan.
I just will, yes, and everything that was already said. The piece that I really liked about the TED Talks is the students identified some sort of issue or problem or something that they were facing and did some research and presented some facts and then came up with a solution. And so I really appreciate them being, you know, advocating for themselves. And it was really about something that was very personal for them, which I appreciated as well. So getting to know the issue about them, just them being role model and sharing some things, things that were shared with their personal. So I absolutely appreciate that and our student community network. So, great job by all. And as I've said with many times before, it's one of my favorite events to have students come in and showcase off to all of us and parents and everyone else what they've been working on during school. So thanks for continuing to do that.
Director Payne.
So I appreciate the different areas that our students are able to explore outside the classroom and some inside the classroom because a couple of things actually are tied to coursework. But also the teachers and the parents and the adults who support these students because all our students have different passions and different interests. And to see that diversity and all the adults that support all of our students are really important. And so I appreciate all the contributions made by district staff and then parents and others who come in and make these things happen for us because there is so much good work going on. On behalf of students, that's a great opportunity to recognize all those people.
And I'll just add that, well, certainly the presentations are all impressive, but there's momentum gaining. The more, each time we have, there just seems like there's more and more people here to, to take of it, take it in. So I think, you know, it's gaining momentum, the word's out, and hope that continues to, to grow.
Yes, and I just echo what everyone else said. I think obviously I'm partial to book clubs and love that. And I also was, I did participate in the TEDx Talks, and I just keep thinking what a new world it is. And I like that we're preparing our, our kids for that world. So it's, it was, all of it was great, so.
May I join in? I wanted to reiterate a few things that you've said when I was talking to Ms. Tussie, who is our teacher that created, so that's a new course that you saw those TED Talks. That's a new seventh grade course that was added and she created with our media specialist, Jean Oswald. And one of the things that she talked about was that this really is living out our strategic plan because it's really talking that worldview because they did a lot of watching TED Talks from around the world, from students around the world before they started creating their own. And then the idea of really just elevating student voice and having them share their stories. So that's something she felt really good about. And you can see our students felt really good about the work that they did too, very proud. And again, when I, I was one of the people that watched some, some of them live. And no matter what, even if it wasn't the best work ever, it was, there was a lot of pride from our students that just even getting up to speak about something personal, they felt really good about it. So you could see that when they left. I also wanted to call out that we had 35 parents volunteer to help lead book clubs in, at OHA. So when you were talking about all the support we get from, from families and adults throughout the community, I just wanted to call out the fact that we have 35 parents coming in to help. And I also wanted to thank Alice Suyford. She's our communications director, and the student you saw over here represents just one of many students who are getting opportunities as communication interns. So if you got a chance to talk to the student here tonight, she would explain that Ms. Suyford puts out a list of all the stories that they could choose from, and they pick the ones they're interested in, and then they work on stories. And she gives them feedback and helps them learn some things about how to write for the school district. So you see, you'll see a lot of our students featured in, whether it's the Globe or on Facebook. So there, there are lots of ways that our adults throughout our community are supporting our students. And we're going to see more of that this evening as we do recognition. So I just wanted to make sure we call those out.
Okay, now our MAF Fund A Need presentation with Mr. Jim Hansen.
Thank you. As I was walking in today, it sort of hit me that it was 45 years ago. I walked into this building when I was at a middle school as a, had the opportunity to come here and teach physics and biology and coach hockey and baseball. Just scary that it was 45 years ago. I still think I'm 35 years old, so I'm not quite sure that happened. And at our big fundraiser, one of the young girls came up to me and said, wow, Mr. Hansen, and gave me a big hug. And I kept thinking, I know her from somewhere, but I don't know where. And she said, well, I'm really active. I volunteer in the schools. And I suddenly realized I had her as a sophomore. She's now a grandparent with kids in the school district. So over that period of time, it gives you a lot of appreciation for what the staff does and for what all of you do. Even though it was almost 35 years ago, I was on the school board. One of the things we did my last year was start the Mod Amedai Area Educational Foundation. So it's nice to see that 35 years later, we're still carrying on a tradition that we started a long time ago. As part of that, we're trying to take on really supporting innovation. We, once you finish your strategic plan, our group has been meeting this year consistently to revise our own strategic plan for MAF and have now adopted a new set of goals for the next five years. One of the outcome of that will be an innovation committee, and we'll be working with others in the community, hopefully to work in partnership. And Barb and Kelly have been phenomenal coming to every meeting. And as I said to them the other night, I, I know when I was on the board for nine years, we had some years where you were at 200 meetings or events a year. I know the commitment that, that you guys make. So on behalf of that, our committee is hoping that we can continue that partnership and bring things forward. We took on this year an effort to revise the Fab Lab and to enhance the opportunities at the middle school. It's the largest project that the Mod Amedai Foundation has ever undertaken. I'm happy to report, we had a very successful fundraiser. We have the first of what I think are going to be two or three checks coming from you because we got a couple of other grants this week, so that's good. We're going to continue to make progress. But as a result of our fundraiser, we're going to be presenting you a check for $86,000 tonight to go towards that project. With a sincere thank you to all the staff and for you members of boards for all the, all that you do for the kids in Mod Amedai. So Barb, with that.
We're going to come up and, we're going to come and accept that from you in just a minute. But I do want to also just publicly thank you for your leadership. So Jim came in as a past president to help us with our strategic planning, and you have so much experience, and I've learned just a ton from you. So I'm really thankful for your leadership on MAF, but also your partnership with me and all you've done to support me in my role over the years. So thank you so much, and we will be happy to come up and accept that check now. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now for recognition of parent volunteers. Sam and Heather Cosby and Adam and Jill Wall and Catherine Margaret.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to say appreciation, give my appreciation to a couple of remarkable families who really stepped up this year to help our kids in the district. So this year, we had a couple of math projects going on, competitive math enrichment activities that we had no one to really coach. And the Math Counts in the middle school is something that had happened in previous years by teachers, but no one had really stepped up to take it on this year. And after thinking about it a little bit, a couple came to me and said, we think we want to do this because we know the kids want it, and they'd been involved in it the previous year. So they took their Friday nights to spend with a big group of middle school kids on a Friday, which is remarkable in itself, and led them to some great games. So you can click here. Thank you. So both of these things that I'm going to talk about tonight connect very directly to our strategic plan, especially in, in the fact that they both represent rigorous academics. They're innovative competitions. They allow kids to express their own passions and their curiosity. And the fact that it's mathematics, but it's also team related. They get to work with other kids and collaborate makes it really an enjoyable kind of activity. So Sam and Heather, you can click for me. Thank you. Is the first couple I'd like to recognize. And they took over the Mod Amedai Middle School Math Counts team. They had 20 students, like I said, and you can click. This talks a little bit about what Math Counts is. This is a national competition, and students compete in various rounds. There's sprints, so they're doing very, very fast arithmetic. They're doing team competitions where they have problem solving to work together and collaborate on. So, and it's very, very grueling. It's really remarkable that the kids are having fun while they're learning, while they're working together and doing mathematics. So in the fall, you can click on. The group started meeting weekly at the middle school from November through March. These were sixth through eighth graders that were all working together. Click to the next one. And then in February, the Cosbys took the kids to the regional competition that was held at Century College, which was kind of nice too because the kids got to spend the day on a campus doing math with their friends. And they took second place, and only the top two teams are able to go on to the state competition. So this qualified Mod Amedai to move on. And after that, the winning team got to go to state competition in, I think it was Plymouth? Is that where we were, way out there in a big hotel? And this is a really kind of unique competition too because it, it goes through the weekend, actually. And the families are invited to come on the Friday night to this big hotel, and they have a dinner for all the kids and the families. And then they have some, you can see the big group picture from above there. All the kids who have qualified from all over the state get together, and they do engineering games and, you know, some icebreakers and things just to kind of interact and, and work together. And then they show up again the next day, and they spend the whole day doing math. So I included some appreciations from the parents who were really, really appreciative that this, their child had this opportunity this year. So I'll let you read those, and I'll make sure that you guys get copies of everything that was said as well. All right, and I have a second group of parents. It was kind of a similar story. Jill and Adam showed up to an advanced academics meeting. And at the end of it, we were chatting, and they said, you know, we've heard about this Math Masters from a friend of ours in a different school district. Is that something we could do? And it's like, well, you know, the problem is having a coach to do it. You know, I'm coaching a lot of things after school, and I'm only one person. I can't do every team. And they're like, well, we might be interested in doing that. So of course I jumped on that right away and got them signed up. You can click here. So this is what Math Masters is all about. And this is more regional as opposed to national. But a lot, thousands of kids participate in this, fourth through sixth grade. So it's really great too that we have a group of OHA Anderson kids who have had some exposure to this type of competition. So they'll be more prepared to go into Math Counts when they get into the middle school as well. So like, like the Cosbys, you can click. They started weekly practices at OHA January through April. They did this every week through the winter, and they would come prepared with packets of information, and the kids would work. And again, like Math Counts, they had individual competitions, and they also do team kind of problem solving together as well. And then in, you can click. Thank you. Who's doing the clicking? Oh, sorry, I keep looking over at Lisa.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So the regional competition that we were invited to attend was at Eagle Point Elementary and near Maplewood. And again, it was a full, it was a, well, half day Saturday, but the kids were there from like 8 o'clock till noon, and they were doing math that whole time. It was amazing, a gymnasium full of fifth graders who were doing mathematics. And to our surprise, well, maybe not to our surprise, these are pretty exceptional kids. But our teams took first place and fourth place in the competition. And then we had several students score in the top 10, including an individual first and second overall for the competition. So I would really like to thank Jill and Adam and Heather and Sam. Would you like to come up now? Thank you so much for your work and your commitment to this.
Well, we're going to come up and take, take a picture in a minute here, but I, I can't help myself. I have to say something. So I heard you say that it's remarkable that students want to come together and do math, and I have to fight that one because I, you know, I, this was something I used to do as a child. I thought this was fun as a child. So I am really thankful, though, that you're providing this opportunity. It is remarkable to spend that much time with, with middle schoolers on a Friday night. That part I'll give you, but the, the, the math part of this, I'm really thankful that you offer this to our students because it's clear they're very proud of what they're doing, and they're having fun while they're doing it. And, and it's a great, challenging opportunity. So thank you so much for that.
I just want to add, this also is in line with our strategic plan because we're really wanting students to find their passion and, and where they belong and where they fit in as a Zephyr. And so thank you for volunteering so many hours so that they had that opportunity and they can figure out what they love or don't love at such an early age. So thank you. All right, let's get a photo. Okay, now you're up. Yes.
Recognizing Fatima.
Yes.
Hey, this is my opportunity to recognize Fatima, our student school board member, and for all of us to recognize her for your hard work. So we, I met you, I think. I don't know if this is when I met you, but one of the things I really remember about you is joining our strategic plan and engaging in our action team planning and contributing your student voice. I believe you're the only student in the room on that action team and talking about building learner agency through exceptional learning experiences. And one of the things I remember throughout this year, or one of the things that struck me throughout this year is how you kept coming back. So you would do your student report for us, and you would bring up all that you had talked about in that community meeting and really tie it to our strategic plan. And that is really quite remarkable as a student to be that engaged at that level in what it is we're after as a district. And I just feel like it really shows how well you served us as the student school board member, really bringing your student voice and bringing the connection to all of our schools. I just can think of a number of times when you would give a report about what was happening at OHA, and you would tie it into the strategic plan. It, it's remarkable, and I don't know that if, if you know that about yourself, but it is very impressive. I do, I, I did have the opportunity to hear a little bit more about you that I didn't know when I was at the scholarship night last night. But I do, one thing I do know about you is all of your engagement at the high school, including National Honor Society. I've seen multiple MAPS presentations from you, which are really, again, quite remarkable in the level of rigor that you bring to that and just the expertise and the way you could talk about advanced science topics is, is really, really quite something. But I did get to hear last night about the MAF scholarship, and so that, knowing that you won one of those two signature scholarships, which is, which is a really high achievement because it's a competitive, it's a competitive scholarship. And so congratulations to you for that. And I don't know if all of you know that Fatima is going to be going to Rutgers next year to study neuroscience, and she is one of four students that is going to be participating in the B.A., B.A.M.D. program, meaning that she will go directly into medical school right after her four years at Rutgers and continue on. So congratulations to you. You have just been such, such a great addition to our board, and we're really thankful that you put in all this time with us because, you know, it's not always easy to be here this late and to be engaged. So thank you for that. So go ahead.
I think we all want to probably say something. Thank you so much. It's, I think one of the highlights for all of us is to have a student member on our board. It's, you know, we only see you about once a month unless we see you at other activities. But I feel like I just have a sense of pride of who you are and at knowing that you're part of, of this past year with us. And just want to say thank you so much for doing that. And I know there are some meetings that go along, and just so grateful that you've been, been with us this year. And I'm very happy to hear about your future plans. They're very lucky to have you. Congratulations.
I just want to also thank you for your time. And I really appreciate it out. I mean, you brought to the board and you've been kind of here. The piece that was kind of like, piece that stood out for me was just the genuineness that you bring and that you are who you are, and then color identity and all that about you. Come here as yourself. You are representing students. You're not afraid to say what you mind. You have the passion you say, you can play it. And so you're going to do great things. I wish you well in your next endeavor. And keep us updated with up to here how things are going.
Thanks for your time. It's a huge commitment to be here and what you're giving up your senior year on a Thursday night to be here. But what I appreciate what you've done all year is how prepared you come to talk about all four schools. You're not just highlighting high school stuff. You know what's going on at each school in the district, so thank you. Director Domann.
So I think everything that's been said, I could probably go down that path as well. But what really stuck out last night, I had an opportunity to hear the award that you received last night. The sheer amount of accomplishments Fatima has. We don't have time in the meeting tonight to cover all of them. It, it truly blew my mind. So I understand you're up to Rutgers. Enjoy Piscataway. I hope at some point in your life you make it back to the community because you're an asset, and we'd really love to have you here.
Thank you, guys, for allowing me to be on the board. It was really an amazing experience. Honestly, I came in not knowing what to expect. I was a little intimidated, but you guys really made me feel welcome, and I'm grateful for that.
So we have a picture, and we have spoken. So if you come on up, then we can review this. this.
Yep, I'm happy to do that. So, at Wildwood, they have a snack drive and they're collecting donations through June 3rd. Snacks are going to go to the backpack program as well as the food shelf. This past Friday, they also had spring playing and I was able to be there for a small portion of it. And there were fruit trucks, games. And I think if I was like an elementary schooler, it'd definitely be like something that came out of a dream to be able to see all of that and be with your friends on a Friday night. At OH, they had nature trail day. And I'm not sure how many plants they ended up planting, but I know they needed to plant 1,382 plants, which is pretty impressive. And as well, on May 13th, they welcomed the incoming third graders. And I was able to talk to some of the current second graders. They really loved it. They really loved the bracelets they got too, I guess. At the high school today was the second NHS blood drive. And then this month, we also had a pop-up event with Hello Boba. And firstly, the students loved being able to go down to the commons and buy Boba. But I was also able to listen to the presentation given by the owner. And her story was really inspiring and it kind of really showed the value of hard work. She came from a background where people might not think she would be where she is because of that background, but she just kept working hard. She didn't take no as an answer. And it was really inspiring. And I know a lot of people were inspired by it because people were talking about it for the rest of the day. This past Monday and Tuesday, the MAPS team went to Milwaukee to present our research. We went to 3D molecular designs. There were about two other schools there. They were both in Wisconsin. But we were able to present our research and also hear about what that organization is doing. Some upcoming events include the field days at the elementary school, at Wildwood, their field day is June 3rd, and at OH, their field day is between May 28th and May 30th. At the middle school, they're doing a variety night on Wednesday, June 5th. So, think of it as like a kind of talent show. And that's all that's left on my report. And I would like to thank the Modest High School Board and the Modest High staff that helped me become the person who I am today.
And you'll drive this for me, Dennis? Okay. So, as always, we have in the news around some pictures of what's been happening around the district. I'll tell you a little bit of our family survey that's out and then some upcoming events. Oh, before we go, there is a picture there of the hammocks that OH, they're out there enjoying. It was a teacher grant and there are hammocks for teachers to be able to check out and go out and spend some time in nature, reading books. So, there's some pictures of kids having a great time. There was a nice story about Lisa Matthews and our Teacher of the Year and then her kindergarten students featured in the White Bear Press recently. And some nice quotes about her. And there's an article that you can check out later. So, I wasn't aware of this competition, but Sri Ram, how I wrote this down, Suresh Kumar, was recently named Scholar of Distinction in Environmental Leadership by the Minnesota Department of Education. And I did not actually know that this was, I haven't known of another student to win this award. So, it was an International Science and Engineering Fair and the world's largest international pre-college science competition. And so, that is a remarkable, I keep saying that, but I'm feeling that way right now, a remarkable accomplishment. And so, congratulations to him. We had the White Bear Center for the Arts Awards recently, and you can see how many students won an award. It was both at the same time, they didn't, they used to separate the visual arts and the right now award ceremony, but they put them together. And so, it was one big event and it was during a board meeting. So, that is why we all lost, we were not able to go and see it. But you can see how many students won awards at that award ceremony. We had our Future Educators Breakfast recently, and it was nice to be able to recognize the two students who were able to join us and wish them well as they embark on their future as in going into teaching. So, you can see a few pictures there of all of us. And it was nice. There were quite a few people who came out, quite a few teachers who came. You can see that David Bennett was there from MAF and a number of board members. And so, it was a nice, and their families. And so, it was a nice event. That's a nice little video that you should check out later. But our second grade students were able to go and visit OH Anderson Elementary. And then that evening, there were also, parents were able to come and have tours given by our students. And they did a very nice job. I think, oh, 1,400 plants. That's pretty close to what you were talking about right there. So, we had, I guess Fatima already talked about this. And then also, there's an annual event where our ecology, our high school field ecology students come over to Wildwood and teach lessons to our students about conservation, go on nature walks. And it's fun to have students recognize, high school students recognize how much work it is to put together a lesson plan and then to engage students. So, I got to witness some of that. So, that was fun. Congratulations to C.C. Seidel, who won 916 Student of the Month for Animal Science and Natural Resources. The Globe is out and recently mailed, so you should be getting that soon if you haven't gotten it already. So, this is our newsletter that goes to all district residents, staff, and families. And the annual family survey is out. This is something we send to all families every year. And so, we are interested in getting your feedback. And so, look for that email invitation. And we did send it via Survey Monkey and making sure that every family got one of those surveys. So, it is unique to you or at least that's something that you can forward. So, look for that in your email. And then there's a long list of upcoming events because it's the end of the school year. And so, there's a lot to celebrate. And Fatima covered quite a few of them. I want to just remind everyone, it's not over yet. There's still a week left on the MAF thanks-a-late. If you would like to send a thank you to any of our staff members. All right. Matt. Look at our board member calendar. It looks short compared to most of the others. I don't really have anything to call out except graduation.
I do. In your folders, we got this calendar. I believe there's a date missing on there that's coming up. It says ice cream on June 3rd at the middle school, but it also had an option of May 30th, too. You can help hand out ice cream at the middle school. It was one of, anyone second me on that? I mean, I'm signed up for the 30th, so I just know that was a double.
Okay.
Choose one.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I show up alone.
Okay. Okay, good to know. Thank you. Okay. And then, obviously, we have our Northeast Metro 916 Passages graduation. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Northeast Metro 916 graduation is on June, oh, they're both on June 5th. And our Passages graduation is on June 5th. And then our graduation at Aldridge Arena is June 8th. Anything else to call out?
916 has multiple graduations. There isn't one, there's five.
Oh, okay.
And so, I don't know which ones listed there, but there are five. And I've got them on my report for later.
Okay, great. Just jot them down then. So, you would have been all alone.
No, I would have been, I would have been delivering.
Shoot.
Okay.
Oh, can I?
Yes. About the graduation, when we were at educator breakfast, we briefly talked about it, but I think I'll bring it up again. Because we are the same group that did graduation last year, we thought perhaps we could skip the rehearsal.
I think we'll maybe try to practice.
I mean, yes, what I mean, but last year, we had to go to Aldridge.
Yeah. So, it's always helpful if there can be people there to help practice, help the students practice, but it is not required. I made it required last time to make sure we all practiced and got that down. But it is no longer required. And I did bring something that you could practice with. But it is helpful to the students to have you there if anyone's available.
When is rehearsal?
It's at 10:30 on that, on June 8th.
And then the actual graduation is at 6:00.
Is at 6:00. Be there at 5:00.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Even if there were just a few people so that the students got used to it, it's handy.
I was going to say that if we weren't there, it would be really awkward because like come across and.
Well, there would be other adults that would fill in for you. It's just nice if you're available. It's helpful.
Anything else on the calendar? Okay. Next is the MCOP Annual Report.
Hi, thank you for giving me a few minutes here to do the annual report. I'm Jenny Morthen, the MCOP Coordinator for the district and also a peer coach. And as it says in the state statute, that I am required to give a report to the school board to talk about the effectiveness of the program. And I know that most of you probably remember some of the basics from last year. But so, we'll just try and go through real briefly what things have been happening in the past year. So, generally, we use, in addition to conversations that we have with people, and when I say we, I mean me and all the peer coaches, there's four of us. It's myself and Sue Kordick and Michael Newman and Angale. And so, in addition to those informal conversations, we do send a survey out every year. Eighty percent of the MCOP participants and the teachers took the survey, which is a really great survey response rate. And usually, we ask about two of the main components, which are the professional learning communities, more commonly known as the PLCs, and the peer coaching aspect, because those are the two main components of MCOP. The survey does cover all six sites, all the schools, early childhood, Wildwood, OH, Passages, the middle school, and the high school. We had 239, so up from last year. And one of the things that we like to do is just pull a couple quotes from the survey. I find it fun that they think that their PLC is their favorite. I didn't know anybody had their favorite meeting, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So, yay, PLC is their favorite meeting. And the peer coaches are well-respected. Some of the pictures, you'll notice that there's two or three people. You're like, that's not a very big PLC. One of the things we did this year is we had some interest on the part of our members in being able to do subgroups. We find that the PLCs are really effective when they're more, the work is more tightly connected to their daily work. So, a subgroup might be, especially at the secondary level, teachers that teach a class in common, being able to have time to talk about their specific results. And so, that also leads into that some of the survey results is that they've, we've heard that they really like the working toward the common challenges in the PLCs because they're seeing the results in their students and their learning and the impact there. One of the other things that we have also been working on really emphasizing is looking at student, the evidence of student learning. Like, is the student learning being moved forward? And that type of data really ranges depending on the building level. Obviously, at the elementary, they're looking at a lot of literacy benchmarks. Their letters training has bridged to practice activities. How are kids doing on that? How is that implementation going? And that informs then their instruction for the next piece. There's a lot of common assessments and the secondary courses. And they oftentimes look at those results, especially as they relate to their learning targets. And so, that is, again, informs the instruction and really helps move the kids towards what their goal is for that. So, the other part, the peer coaching, again, a few quotes from that. And I thought actually the best way is to listen to.
Hi, I'm Rob Ponius. I'm the music teacher here at OH Anderson. And I just want to talk a little bit about peer coaching. I've chosen to be observed by my peer coach many more times than actions required by the program because it can be a very lonely business. And if you're the only one looking at your classroom, you need another set of eyes in there. Let's say you're trying something new. You just can't see everything that's happening. And you can't, when you're trying to implement new things, you just can't take it all in because your mind's moving a thousand miles a minute. And so, you can ask that person to come in and say, hey, would you look for this? Would you look for this? They're gathering the data as an observer that is just completely valuable to you. And so, that way, I can be engaged with my students. I don't have to worry about any of that. I don't have to worry. They can worry for that for me. And then, the best part is, is the data that they gather is what I've asked them to gather. And they can look for other things certainly too. But then that way, we can be laser focused on the part of the lesson and the content we really think is important. And then, they come in and in a very non-evaluative way, they can help you with that. I don't know any teacher that puts a brand-new lesson in front of their principal when they come in for an observation. I just don't know anyone that does that. This is something that you don't have to have any of that worry about, what are they going to think about how this did? They're just going to show it to you. And it's a great feeling to have those set of eyes. I would do it as many times as possible just because it really helps. If you're willing to be a little bit vulnerable, you're going to have a lot more successes. But that risk-for-reward thing is very difficult in an evaluative form. And coaching just doesn't do that. And then, after it's done, my peer coach really pushes me to think much more deeply about probably what I would do had I been thinking about the lesson later. Because you can get caught up on so many things that aren't important in that impartial view and there is really, really important. Strong teachers are really lifelong learners. And peer coaching is one of the best ways to be a lifelong learner is to have them come in and help you with these new lessons. Strong teachers are really lifelong learners, and peer coaching is one of the best ways to be a lifelong learner is to have them come in and help you with these new lessons.
Madam Chair. Ms. Murthen, so the requirement from the state is if we have a program, we're supposed to do this reporting, correct? So this program is voluntary. The school, it's not mandated by the state, correct?
That would like to, but we're grandfathered in essentially.
So, so the districts that are grandfathered in get funding from the state. Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First reading of policies.
So I'm just pulling up, sorry, the order. So all the policies here, this is a first reading of all of our policies. They were reviewed by the policy committee. I'm just going overview-wise, uh, policy five oh nine, five thirty-four and five sixteen all had updates related to statutory changes. And policy seven twenty-two didn't have any changes, but it is an annual review of that policy. So there's, there are no changes to policy seven twenty-two, public data request, and the other ones all have changes because of statute. So policy five oh nine, enrollment of non-resident students, there's a new requirement that we need to, as of this year, need to report to the state anyone who applied for open enrollment but was denied and the reason for the, that they were denied. So that's a new reporting requirement, but in terms of other parts of the policy, there's no other change to our practice. There were some things that are spelled out that we already did, but that was, there were some updates that way. Policy five thirty-four has the updates with the school meals policy, so it includes the, the free lunch. And then there was also, again, a practice that needed to be included in our policy that we didn't have included, and that had to do with taking away, if a student had a, so it doesn't apply anymore even, but if a student had a, a meal and they didn't have money in their lunch account, we couldn't take the tray away from them. But now they're all free meals. So, but regardless, it needs to be in our policy. We have to have it in there. And so that, our policy now aligns with, completely with Stillwater's, which is another thing that we wanted to do since Stillwater provides our food service. And so that way, as we have, um, people who might travel back and forth between the two districts where they both, they have the same policy that they're following. So there's nothing, there's nothing that is surprising about that, those updates. It's just to become, they're just in line now with, with the legislation. Policy five sixteen, oh, sorry, did you want to ask a question about that?
I just had a question about the meals one. With the meals being provided by the state, like the unpaid meal charges and things, why would students ever have the unpaid? Because it looked like, and also in the policy when I read, they couldn't, if they didn't have any balance, they couldn't get something like à la carte or extra. So I didn't understand why there would be balance. That was confusing to me.
Yeah, I think it would be because of à la carte, if something, if they ever went into. But I see, um, there's also Leslie in the background who has some other things to say.
Yeah, I saw that, but they, it kind of made it look like they couldn't go negative by getting a second one.
I will just say that I think, I, to be honest with you, I think part of this is we needed to catch up from previous legislation that said you cannot take a tray away. And we, even though that was our practice, we didn't call it out. The, the balances also, I mean, all of this, I, I actually think it's going to be updated again in the not-so-distant future to align. But because we have to ensure that we have those things spelled out in our policy, we are doing that to meet that requirement. Again, I, I, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't affect practice, but I, I understand, I understand the confusion.
Milk is free yet? That was some. Do you know what happened with that, Lucy?
I know. And no one had any, um, no one spoke against it. So I think it's in the Amundras Bill, but there's fourteen hundred pages to read through, so I can't really look that up right now.
But I can get back to you on it next, at our next reading. Any other questions about that one? And, and the last one is student medications and some updates there due, just ongoing updates due to the cannabis law. So, and then our, um, school nurse likes to also review it and look at all the appendices to make sure that our practices match on what's in there. So, um, that's what you'd see in those. Oh, and again, that one is there are no changes. So I kind of did a quick overview. That one has no changes. It's just, uh, the policy committee did just do an annual review of that one.
Okay. But it is considered a first reading?
It's considered a first reading. We could, if you'd like to, as a board, I mean, because there are no changes. Really up to you. Typically, we keep everything there for, for the readings. Yep. Okay.
Now, on to action items. Approval of donations and grants for April twenty twenty-four totaling forty-three thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-four cents. Do I have a motion? Moved by Director Domon. Seconded by Director Peterson. All donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of these funds will be to further the mission of the school district and are used towards the wishes of the donor. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Friend, approval of ten-minute instructional increase.
So this is, uh, what I have for you tonight. I had mentioned that I was going to go through, um, this presentation that you've seen a couple of times now before and had a lot of discussion about. But so that we have it all in one place, I am going to go through, go through the whole presentation that you've, again, that you've seen before. So the reason that we've been talking about the addition of instructional time, we have three identified needs. One, at the elementary level, looking to increase instructional time during each school day so that we can, um, do a better job with our literacy blocks with the new curriculum and the new Read Act requirements. This will support our elementaries to address that instructional time requirements. At our secondary level, in particular at the middle school, there, we had our first year with, uh, working through the middle school schedule, and there are some changes they'd like to make, including increasing class period time. So there are a couple of things they're going to do with the schedule. And then this additional ten minutes will allow us to increase those class periods to a length that our teachers would, are asking to, to make those class periods a little bit longer. What this does is by adding this, this time, these ten minutes every day, it will add twenty-eight instructional hours over the course of the year. In addition, we are, this will also allow us to have a couple of, change a couple of our student contact days into professional learning time for teachers. And so even with those two days that we're, we're going to talk about to change those to professional learning time, we will still have twenty-eight hours more next year of instructional time. So this is the draft of the new schedule, what it would look like if, uh, once, I'm going to ask you to approve this this evening. So Wildwood would start ten minutes earlier. OH Anderson is going to shift their start time and end time. The middle school and high school would both add a ten minutes to the end, Passages, ten minutes to the end of the school day. Mind going, thank you. Um, I, I think I, I explained this a little bit, but the additional ten minutes of instructional time will allow elementary teachers to schedule the literacy requirements throughout the day. And again, this has to do with our new curriculum adoption and the science of reading research and instructional practices that Wildwood and OH has been working on for the past few years. For the secondary, thank you. Um, again, it's increased time by class period. This will allow, we heard from both students and parents about giving a little bit more student work time with support and feedback from the teacher during the school day. That was something that we were looking at, um, as a need after making this change, the new middle school schedule. And then the next one, uh, teacher learning time. The additional instructional time will allow for additional professional learning specifically around our curriculum work. So there is not a lot of time for collaborative curriculum work across, uh, the district because of the different needs by each level. These would be dedicated for, for that curriculum work, K-12, um, throughout the, the district. And so like, we talked about vertical teaming, for example, being able to have our, our middle school and high school teachers meet together. Likewise, having our Wildwood and OH teachers meet together around a, a learning topic. So that's what we have planned for those days. We did, uh, ask for feedback about the implementation. Again, we didn't ask, do you want us to do this or not? It was, we're, as we move forward with this, what are some things that you think we need to be considering in this implementation? We talked to staff at staff meetings, and then staff also talked with principals at different times after that as well. We did do a family survey, and four hundred three individuals completed those and shared some consideration for the district as well as individual schools as well. So we have some themes. There was quite a bit about traffic, concerned about the traffic impacts and, um, and the timing, making sure that kids can get to after-school activities or just being able to get between Wildwood and OH for those families who, who, um, who traveled, who pick up their kids. Um, also questions about bus routes. And I will tell you that we've met, I shared this with you before, we met with our transportation supervisor who is working on redoing routes and thinking again about minimizing the amount of time students are going to be spending on the buses. There will be new routes as a result of the change. So, um, that's something that we are working on right now. Also, conversation about movement and breaks and just the importance of incorporating movement. I think there was some concern when talking about increasing the amount of time spent on literacy, just making sure that we are also attending to the needs of our youngest learners who do need to get up and move a little bit as well. So that came up, um, from both families and, um, mostly from families, less so from teachers, but also a, a conversation there. Um, I mentioned the secondary homework time, just interest in allowing students to have some time with the teacher in class and, um, really thinking about that, those after-school events as well. So just our next steps, we're going to ask you to approve this evening, this instructional time increase and the additional professional, teacher professional days. And then we'll continue to work on these considerations and begin the process for fall implementation, which we already have. But there are certainly some things to work through. I'll just say in particular, in particular with transportation is one thing that'll just take some time with the routing, but that has already begun. So. Any questions?
Comments maybe? Um, one, I want to say, um, thank you to everyone involved with this. We did a great, I think a, a good job was done communicating with the community and with the parents and teachers. So there's a lot of work that went into that, so thank you. Number two, I'd like to call out that I think this is important because it gets us more in line with a lot of the districts we consider to be our high-achieving peer districts. And so it's great that we are continuing to strive to be better here in the district. And then, um, number three, I'm hopeful a year from now, we get to come back and, and understand more about how that teacher learning time, those two additional days are being used, and maybe come back with some examples of, of how that's being implemented and put to good use.
Dr. Reichel nodding in the background, uh, so she will be prepared for that.
And I had something that I was going to add on that was very similar to yours about the increased minutes. Um, and I'm looking at one of the themes of saying the secondary homework. I guess I'd be looking for a year from now, like, what are the, you know, what are some of the, what's some of the evidence of success around instructional time? Like, I think that in a couple of extra minutes in every class with, working with that teacher is really important. And I think homework is almost a totally separate issue, like allowing that time for students to be able to ask questions of the teacher, to be able to have the teacher there for support, to be able to, um, not that it's, I, I guess I would be a little concerned if a year from now, that was just extra minutes just for homework time. To me, I see that this is valuable time that students can get help that they need, ask questions, continue on with the lesson, and also it provides so many different stress or release to our schedule as a whole, to be able to do a lot of things like the professional learning, all of those things. So I think that this is great for so many reasons. I would just love to hear a little bit of some of those pieces of what that classroom lesson or some examples might have looked like that were now possible that weren't possible when we didn't have these extra minutes. So that's going to be tougher to tell, you know, like, but it would be great to, um, hear some examples of maybe what teachers were able to try or do because they just, when you think about a couple of minutes in every class, every single day, and some examples of what that might look like over an entire school year. So, so thanks for all the work on it as well. I think this is great. And thanks for getting all of the feedback on, from the community and staff as well.
Friend, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, but I want to be clear that as a governance board, we're approving an increase of ten minutes. We're not approving schedules. That's all managerial work that you and your team put together, and that additional information helps us in our decision-making. But with any decision that's made, you've got the governance decision, you've got the managerial pieces. And if, after a month or a year, And if after a month or a year, other tweaks need to be made, not in total minutes, but in schedules, that won't come back to us. That's not what we're approving tonight. We're saying it's 10 minutes, and so as you work this summer on that implementation piece, as that implementation happens, you don't need to come back to us for those changes. It'd be great to hear about things that, that yes, do need to change, but because of your work and ongoing evaluation of your decision-making process and, and things, if there were some unintended consequences, those would just be dealt with as needed. So I just want to be clear on what the board is approving, right?
Right, you're approving the, the 10 minutes, the 10 additional minutes, and then we'll be asking you to update the, the calendar as well.
Question. Don't remember if I asked this once before or not, but does adding 10 minutes to the end of the, adding 10 minutes in the school day, does it impact the amount of time at the end of the day after the last class? For instance, at the high school, does it impact the amount of time that a student has access to a teacher after school to make up tests, seek help, et cetera?
I, I believe that, well, it would be 10 minutes less at the after-school, I suppose. But we also have time during, I, I don't, I wouldn't.
So if the, if the last period is 3 o'clock, end of 3 o'clock, and in typical practice, help me understand, is there an amount of time that teachers are required to be after school?
Well, there's a contract, there is a contract day. I guess my thought would be to answer the question accurately would be that our teachers do a good job of, if a student needs to make something up or needs help, they find ways to have that happen, whether it's during flex time, during class time, after school, before school. I, I just know them to be people who are going to help work that out. And so wherever that happens to be, I, you know, I, I don't know that, that they would say, I have 10 less minutes for you after school. I think they would say, how can we make this work so that you can make up your, your test?
Understood, thank you.
Contract day doesn't change.
Your contract day is staying the same.
Again, the contract day is a number of minutes, it doesn't have times in the contract. So if the time we needed teachers because of, if an unintended consequence is what you're, what you Paul, were to happen, because the contract doesn't dictate time, you would be able to shift the contract day by 10 minutes, you know, and things like that. So that's what I was trying to allude to before, there could be unintended consequences we're not aware of, but we don't need all of those to come back to us because of the way our administrative team works. They address them because we're only approving the governance piece, and all those managerial pieces are important, and the perspective is important, but that's not our space, and you have ways of addressing that.
Any other questions? Okay, well, then I'm asking for approval of, and I think the, the 10-minute instructional increase, yep.
Moved by Director Payne.
Second.
By Director Donna. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and so the next, the calendar committee worked on the updating the next year's school calendar, 24-25 school calendar based on increasing the 10-minute instructional time, and then having two days for professional learning for, for professional work for our staff. And the criteria the committee used was really to look at scheduling it to try and group it with existing days that students would not be in school, and also putting it at a time when optimal learning for our staff. And so the two dates that are on there, I believe, are December 2nd. Oh, and yeah, so it's December 2nd was the first one right after, is it December 2nd? Sorry about this, it's right after Thanksgiving, yes, Monday, December 2nd. And the other one that for this, this one that we talked about was April 18th. We got some feedback from families about that weekend, and this was something that the calendar committee agreed would be a good day for this year, would be April 18th to add that. And so with that, I'm asking for your, you to approve the updated 24-25 calendar. The rest you had already approved, and this is just the two additional days.
Second. Question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, school board committee reports. You will start with the AMSD org report.
AMSD met on May 3rd. Secretary of State Steve Simon came and spoke on the role of schools in the election process. And then Bright Works came and gave a presentation on the Read Act and many changes that are happening at Bright Works based on the Read Act. The next meeting is tomorrow morning, bright and early. And tomorrow morning, we'll be going over an overview of the omnibus education bills and education-related legislation.
I knew that about Bill.
Maybe. Okay, MAFE report.
MAFE last met Monday, May 20th. And the mission moment presented at MAFE was the Montomeda High School DECA. Students came and presented and talked about their experience in DECA this year, and there were four different students that presented. They went to regionals in January, they went to state in March, and they had a lot of success at both of those events. And they talked about their experience in DECA, they were so well-spoken. Many of the MAFE board members were, said things like, wow, I would hire him, that can't wait to see what's going to happen, so that, they were really impressed, the MAFE board was really impressed with the students in, and year one of, of DECA. So also, they talked about how this has been run in Zephyr Time, am I getting that right? Flex Time, wrong school, Flex, Flex Time at the high school. And that there's going to be more business course offerings for them next year, but they're also going to continue to run this as, in a flex time session as well, so they can reach students who are involved in the course, courses for business, and also students who want to just take on that as a flex time. So that was a good chunk of the meeting, was a presentation from students. Couple other things have already been mentioned, the Thanks a Latte event, the thanking the staff member is, is going on right now, Superintendent Duffren talked about that. So if you want to do that, you can check that on, on the MAFE website. They talked about the involvement in different community events, like the PTO Spring Fling, the Future Educators Breakfast, and the Scholarship Nights, which was last night at 7 o'clock. And the last piece I'll mention here is that the teacher grants. That those, those, they talked about what the grants that were approved, and now that process is being done twice a year in the spring and the fall. And so that the items that are approved as far as teacher grants, that they want those to be innovative projects and things that are aligned to the MAFE new strategic plan. So that is it for my update on MAFE. Our next meeting, I guess, will be June 17th, and that will be a short meeting as kind of a wrap-up for the school year.
Now, School Board Association legislative updates. I am going to direct you to your computer on June 20th at 1:00 PM, and you can hear every education bill dissected and explained, and any question you want answered. I certainly can't do that. I listened on Friday, they gave an overview for a half an hour, and then on June 20th, we'll be as long as they need to dissect every education bill. Just two highlights I have, and then you can listen if you'd like, is the Read Act money is coming to districts for implementation and training. And the other thing is the payroll tax that will hit us for family leave was supposed to be 7%, and they passed it at 8.8%. Oh, that's no fun.
Leslie sent out the 916 board summary, but a couple of things. The, there are many graduations, May 29th, May 30th, there's one May 30th, May 31st, and June 3rd. We have students in the May 31st event at 6 o'clock at Cora, and we have a preschooler graduating from the oral auditory program on May 30th. On Thursday, June 13th, will be the 916 Foundation Golf Tournament, if anyone is a golfer, at 11:30 in the morning. If you can go to the foundation website to register for that. At the board meeting, we recognized Steve, who is retiring. He is a great Pyrenees, who has been with the district for quite a few years in, starting as a service dog. We heard about Metro Heights Academy programs, we had a presentation on ecrometric survey review, we looked at our budget for FY '25, we did our first reading of the Century College Joint Powers Agreement. There'll be some changes to that because the Montomeda Academy is moving over to Century College in the fall. So we have been working with their calendar to align their calendar more with the partnership with Century to make things more seamless for students, and then we renewed many insurance policies.
I have a silly question, what's Montomeda Academy?
So that, that, oh, sorry. That's the Alternative Learning Center that is hosted by 916 for all the member districts, but it's right on that, it's in Montomeda on Century, but, oh, it's in White Bear Lake, across the street from Montomeda, on, on the, kind of across from Passages.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
But it's called Montomeda Academy, and its reason is, is because it used to be where Passages is right now, so it truly was in Montomeda at the time, and then it moved across the street, so.
And they're looking at changing the name when they move to Century.
What's the date on that fundraiser, golf fundraiser?
Fundraiser, Thursday, June 13th. So if you go to the 916 Foundation webpage, they'll have all the information. It's at Oak Marsh.
Any other board reports?
Okay, PTO, last Friday, it's been mentioned, was the big fun fair, Spring Fling, $18,000 raised in three hours at Wildwood Elementary. They had to kick people out, it was voluntold, I had to turn off the cotton candy machines, and the lines were out the door, it was awful job to have to do, tears.
On your part?
My children's, yeah. It, I mean, they would have stayed and played for hours, but we had to shut down the cotton candy. And then, so it was, it's, it's great, it's such a fun, it's chaotic, if you don't like people, it's not your thing, but it is packed. And then the other thing is, they never fulfilled the PTO teacher grants this year because Wildwood wants whiteboard paddles, and they're just really toying with how these paddles end up working out, giving them to little kids. They want, it's to write on a whiteboard, and then you raise it up, and then you raise your paddle if you have the right answer. So instead of giving them to every teacher at Wildwood, they're going to pilot it in a, each grade's going to get one class, instead of spending this $5,000 on whiteboard paddles, they're going to try it in one in each grade, see if they're durable, see what kids do with them, see what's wrong with just holding up their whiteboard they already have.
I don't have a report, but could I just, there's a comment I didn't make that I want to go back to on the QCOM, and just for the, this Bertha's presentation, it seems to me that each year, the results, the survey results are very good. And she asked if there's anything maybe for the next time, maybe add some perspective to the survey results by showing previous years and just seeing how things are going, that'd be helpful, so, thank you.
Can I make one last comment too? Sorry, I promised to be brief, just a quick call-out and congratulations to the girls' Zephyr tennis team, making it to the state tournament. I'm sorry, I said girls, I meant boys, but pretty cool, beating Moundsview, like that was a really big deal.
Since we're at it, we'll go. And with that, congratulations to all of the seniors and the Passages students who will be graduating this year. I know the countdown is on, and to teachers who are well-deserving of a summer break. So since we won't have another regular meeting before the school year is over, congratulations to all because we know the countdown is, is on.
Well, and I have to add one more. The esports team, I know you're probably not familiar with, they got second in state.
Did you? Well. We also had, we had one, two, three, four, five of our students went to state in chess as well. Yep. The highest one, Noah House placed third, so, yeah. Let's.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'm moved.
By Director Regan, seconded by Director Donna, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned, thank you.